Good morning. I will now call to order the October 21, 2021, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, Administrator, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, our staff supports today Mary Bork, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Council. Commissioner Fisher is at another event this morning. I will attempt to join the meeting later, but for now, roll call. Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Now, I will lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty for justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. As always, the public is welcome to sign up to testify. Registration for public comment will close at 5 minutes past 10:00. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced during this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. Today is the Great Shakeout Emergency Earthquake Preparedness Drill that is happening around our nation. And so at 10:21 a.m. today, we will have a quick presentation prior about the earthquake drill, and then we'll actually practice the drill here. But because of that, we're going to switch the order on your agenda with the Chair's permission, which we have done right at the start of this meeting, so that we have, because we have a time certain on that presentation, we're actually going to begin with the second item today as the first item, and that is proclamation for October 2021 to be recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Clackamas County. Erin Hinkleman, who is Director of the Family Justice Center, will present and also will read the proclamation at that time. So Erin, if you'd please come forward to the center table here, and go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Erin Hinkleman, and I am the Director for Safe Place Family Justice Center. I've been an employee with the Sheriff's Office for a little over a year now and have previously worked for a domestic and sexual violence community-based organization in Clackamas County for almost 14 years. Thank you for inviting me to speak today, Chair Smith and members of the Commission. I'm here today because October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic Violence Awareness Month was first observed in 1987 and includes various activities at the local, state, and national level, but all share common themes: mourn those who have died because of domestic violence, celebrate those who have survived, and connecting those who work to end violence. Domestic violence is a pervasive, life-threatening crime that impacts our community at every level, from individual families to public health to the local economy. One in four women and one in seven men will experience domestic violence from an intimate partner in their lifetime. Domestic violence affects all of us, and all of us must be a part of the solution. In 2013, with the support of our Commission, we opened a Safe Place Family Justice Center as our community's collective response to adult and children impacted by family violence. Our center is comprised of 10 public and nonprofit onsite partners co-located under one roof, providing trauma-informed wraparound services free of charge. To date, we've provided advocacy and support to over 5,000 individuals seeking services for the first time and had over 28,000 visits for service. Thank you so much for your time and all your support you've provided to survivors over the years. At this time, I'd like to respectfully request the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month be read into the record.
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So proclaiming October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Clackamas County, whereas domestic violence is a serious crime in Clackamas County that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, and whereas family is the foundation of a safe and healthy community, and it is the goal of Clackamas County for our communities to be safe, and whereas 782 households sought shelter from abuse in their homes in 2019, and whereas 30.7% of families involved with the Department of Human Services Child Welfare Department had domestic violence as a component of their case in 2019, and whereas there were 4,621 visits to the Family Justice Center in 2019 from people seeking assistance and safety from violence, and 1,328 visits in 2020 during the pandemic, and whereas on any given night, 21% of the county's homeless population are victims of domestic violence, and whereas victims should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and abusers should be heldable to the fullest extent of the law, and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this serious crime, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for people to learn about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now, therefore, it be claimed by the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners that October 2021 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Clackamas County. We encourage all citizens of the county to join in this observance and to learn more about what they can do to help to met domestic violence, both individually and collectively.
Erin, thank you for bringing this opportunity and raise awareness about domestic violence. I appreciate it very much. This is a topic that's very near and dear to my heart, and as other Commissioners are too. And a little bit, we'll entertain a motion to pass this proclamation. However, I think some of my Commissioners might want to comment. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank you for all that you do. This has been a long time coming. I was here back in the day when Michelle Eberle was the Director of Clackamas Women's Services, before you had the Family Justice Center, before you had really moved. And under the leadership you've had with Melissa Erblem, it has blossomed into, I think, one of the top domestic violence programs in the state. And the model of having everybody co-located in one spot, I think that we have always supported, and I think this county is proud to be able to provide you, or I believe it's our Sheriff's Office, with that building and that space that you have and need in order to do the important work that you do. But I do have one ask, and that's this. One of the things we're finding out right now at the local level as well as the national level, and it has to do more with workforce, is not only do we have to do the continuum of women and children who have had the trauma of this, is there any way we can have a conversation with Clackamas Women's Services about early childhood education, what that means? How do we go ahead and integrate that with early learning hubs? And do you have a presence there of anyone who is really kind of? And the reason I'm asking this is because it's a national issue. There are dollars there. The National Association of Counties has a Counties for Kids program that we're looking at, and actually also looking at it as an economic mobility issue, which women who have been impacted by violence, as you know, that's one of the key areas and barriers, is where do they get a job after where they live? How do they get the childcare they need in order to survive? So I would like to make that ask, that we actually start...
Martha, I think that is really interesting. It sounds like it's quite involved, and we have a hard stop at 10:15 for our next presentation. And I'm not trying to minimize anything that you said. It's very important.
Thank you, Chair Smith.
Yeah, and let's do some follow-up on your ideas. Thank you.
Absolutely. I've taken notes.
Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to just reflect on the last 10 or so years and at least what I've recognized in this, in your work, in the work of domestic violence and dealing with that. Earlier this week, we had our diversity conference and, you know, on a lot of talk recently about immigration, immigrants, and cultures and so forth. And I know that domestic violence, as it relates to other cultures and the acceptance of, so to speak, is quite different. So when people come to our country and they are adapting to our culture and they're bringing their culture, there are those conflicts. I'm just kind of curious if we've done any recent analysis of what income levels are currently, you know, before and after the COVID crisis and how that's impacted the number and the rates of domestic violence. So, you know, whether it's, you know, people of color or income levels, I think that they disproportionately have perhaps less opportunity to seek help. You know, I know that they're disproportionately affected, but how and why or how can we fix or get more access to those populations? So noble cause, but I'd really love to see some data on that.
Thank you very much. We're going to move this along, Commissioners, on this presentation. Commissioner Schull. Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. I think both of these comments made by Commissioners is really good, and we'll see what we can do with those. Thank you both for bringing those forward. I will now entertain a motion.
I move for the approval of the proclamation to make October 2021 Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Clackamas County.
Second. The motion has been made by Commissioner Schull and seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion on this? Thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you so much.
Mary, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schull.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Go forth and do good work.
Thank you so much for having me.
And thanks for your support team in the back. And all your masks matched today. Is purple a significant color? Oh, I can see your t-shirts you're wearing. Very nice. Thank you, Gary.
Great. Thank you, Erin, and team. Yes, so we are going back to the presentation, "Earthquake Preparedness" and the Clackamas County Shakeout Drill. Daniel Niebauer is the interim Director of Disaster Management. He will present. And I know you're going to say this, Daniel, but I will also say this is a drill. This is not real. But we're all going to practice at 10:21 a.m. what we would do if there was an actual earthquake. So it's a drill only. We are not going to evacuate the building, but we will ask you Commissioners to go under your desks. Sorry to steal your thunder. Go ahead, Daniel.
Thank you, Administrator Smith. Daniel Niebauer, and I'm Director of Disaster Management. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. At 10:21 today, county employees will participate in the Shakeout Drill. The Shakeout Drill provides an opportunity for us to practice drop, cover, and hold. Organ devised statute 400.900 requires all state and local agencies to participate in an annual drop, cover, and hold drill, and it is good practice. Residents and businesses are encouraged to take part as well. Drop, cover, and hold is the correct protective action to take, and we will watch a video in a moment that will demonstrate appropriate actions for various situations. There are over 1,000 earthquakes in Washington, Oregon, every year, with about two dozen of those being large enough to be felt. Clackamas County is at risk for both crustal and subduction zone earthquakes. The last two crustal earthquakes in Oregon were in 1993, Scotts Mills of magnitude 5.6, and Klamath Falls, whose main shocks were magnitude 5.9 and 6.0. Shaking from these types of earthquakes are expected to be about 90 seconds or less. The greatest earthquake threat comes from a subduction zone earthquake. The impacts of that will be wide-reaching and felt through the entire Northwest. The last one of those was in January 1700, and this earthquake is expected to be a magnitude 9 with shaking that lasts about five minutes or longer. This is why, in addition to knowing and practicing this protective action of drop, cover, and hold, we recommend every employee and community member have an individual and family disaster and emergency plan, as well as items to live off for about two weeks. That means a home kit with about two weeks' food, of water, shelter, disaster, sanitation; a vehicle kit, items to either shelter in place or use to get to a family meeting place; and a work kit, items to be able to shelter at work for a period of time as well as to help you get back to your home. And we do have a quick video that we can play to demonstrate how to drop, cover, and hold depending on the situations you happen to be in.
Mary, you're going to tee that up?
Apologize for this chair. It should be already there to go. It was right there a moment ago. And my sharing is not taking. Here we go. I do apologize, Chair.
No worries, Mary.
Just take your time, Mary.
Daniel, why don't you go ahead and tell us what was in the video?
No problem. If it hops on, then we can go back to it. For the first primary for drop, cover, and hold, the ideal situation you want to be in is to be able to get on your hands and knees because the earthquake will shake the ground and make it difficult to walk. Get under something if possible and grab a hold of what that is because the earthquake may move a table that you are underneath, and you want to make sure that the table either doesn't move or you move with it. If you do not have something to get under, protect your head and get close to an interior wall. If you're driving a car, let the car coast to a stop. Place the parking brake and stop. If you are in bed, stay in bed, but again, protect your head. The common theme with all of these is to protect your head, and you're going to want to generally be in a situation where you're low to the ground and protect your head, ideally getting something. For individuals that might be here in the room where they don't have a table, placing your head under the chair would as well as give you that bit of protection. Part of the reason we tell folks to do this and to cover your head is that often buildings won't collapse, but items like the ceiling tiles up there will come down along with some of the other items in there, and you can get injured and not be able to evacuate the building just because something has fallen on top of you. And so ideally, you're keeping your body safe so that when the shaking stops, then you'll be able to evacuate the building and get somewhere safe. There are some types of buildings, like unreinforced masonry buildings, that you need to pay extra caution to because they are prone to collapse and have things falling down. Are there any questions that I can answer about drop, cover, and hold?
Commissioners, do we have any comments? While we're teeing up the video, you talk about the earthquake in 1993 by the Scotts Mills area. I lived maybe a mile from the epicenter at that time, and we affectionately call it the "spring break quake", and we're thankful that our kids were not in school because our high school was built in the early 1900s out of brick and was used just as a secondary site because they had built a new one at the time. Or no, had they not? Maybe this facilitated in the citizens building a new one. I think that's what happened. But it's the first quake that I had been involved in of any magnitude. And it was like 4:00 in the morning. It woke me up. I looked out my second-story bedroom window, and I literally saw the ground moving like this in four-foot waves. And I didn't think that was even possible. And my daughter was like three years old at the time. I ran into her bedroom screaming, "Are you okay? Are you okay?" Well, she didn't even wake up, but then after I did that, she woke up, right? So Mom was a bit of a panic, but my daughter was fine. And actually, it threw my husband out of bed onto the floor. That is how strong. And what was the magnitude on that one?
So this is the drill right now. It's just 10:21.
The Scotts Mill earthquake was a 5.6.
Yeah, I'm just going to remind the public that was a drill. At 10:21, there will not be no evacuation, and it was not a real earthquake, just to be clear. Please, Daniel, proceed.
The Scotts Mill was a 5.6 earthquake. And just as a reminder, in a magnitude, every magnitude individual digit that goes up is actually 33 times stronger. So a difference between a magnitude 5 and magnitude 9 is very significant.
Is what?
It's very significant.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't know the exact numbers.
Absolutely. We had a couple of churches that were damaged by that. And after the fact, I think a lot of people went out and bought earthquake insurance on that. And so it was quite the experience for our community and a lot of the small communities around. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. I know I was on a farm, too, in Camby at the time, and I remember my kids running up. It did wake them up, but I thought it was our neighbor's airplane because he was an aerial sprayer. And I thought the rumbling was, and he would always fly it over our house and turn around. And I thought, oh, my God, the plane finally stalled and it's hit us. And as it turned out, it was actually an earthquake. And I remember at the time, I worked at Mount Angel Abbey Library in Mount Angel, and the damage it did to that building, water damage, books.
You're right. Mount Angel received a lot of damage.
They had a big, big problem. I remember going up to the library and having to try and figure out how to save books at that point in time, so.
There's memories from that I'll never forget. When I talk about the four-foot waves of ground, I think maybe what woke me or I remember is this big, I must have been a snap of the underground because it was like an explosion. I heard something explode, and I thought, like you said, a bomb had gone off. I had no idea earthquakes did that. Living in Oregon, we don't get them that often, and hopefully we won't again. Any other comments from my Commissioners? Gary?
We do have the video. If we could still show it because I think it's worth that.
Yes. I would love to see the video. Thank you.
Mary, go ahead.
Any other comments from my Commissioners? Gary?
We do have the video. If we could still show it because I think it's worth that.
Yes. I would love to see the video. Thank you.
Mary, go ahead.
Okay. I don't know what happened there.
We got technical. Go ahead, Mary.
It's sharing my screen, and the video is...
One second. It's worth it. It's worth waiting, Commissioners. This is a good video.
Yeah, absolutely. It was just right there. There we go.
Drop, cover, and hold on is the most appropriate way to protect yourself in the event of an earthquake. When the shaking begins, drop to your hands and knees. This position protects you from falling and allows you to move if necessary. Cover your head, neck, and entire body if possible under a sturdy table or desk. Hold on to your shelter until the shaking stops. Be prepared to move with your shelter if the shaking shifts it around. If no table or desk is nearby, go to an interior wall or low-lying furniture and cover your head and neck. If driving, coast to the side of the road, stop, and set the parking brake. Avoid bridges. If you have a wheelchair or have mobility impairments, set the wheel locks and lean forward. If in bed, stay put. Hold on to the bed and protect your head. Practice drop, cover, and hold on. When the shaking starts, you don't want to think about what to do. You want to know what to do. It could save your life.
Thank you for that. Is that, Daniel, going to be on the website someplace?
That is on the website, yes.
Great. Well, Daniel, I want to thank you for bringing that forward and giving us this presentation. Gary, what's...
Yeah. Thank you, Daniel, very much. That's it for the earthquake drill. You all did great, Commissioners. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda, and as soon as we're set up here, just a quick moment.
Yeah, that's really something interesting. Martha, you probably and I can probably share our stories on that.
Very fascinating.
All right. So, Mary, if you'd please read the consent agenda.
Let me share that. This needs to be moved back. All these things to share. Fantastic. All right. 2A1, those are the approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under B, Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a revenue intergovernmental grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Employment and Training Services. Grant award is $157,795.95. Required matching funds of $138,000... I can't even speak this morning. $138,196 will be funded through the budgeted county general funds. Under 2, approval of a federal subrecipient grant agreement amendment number 1 with central city concern to continue service delivery of the law enforcement diversion program. Amendment value is $297,272.68, partially funded with $220,660.52. Clackamas County General Funds with the remaining balance funded by U.S. Department of Justice. Let me scroll down. 3, approval to accept funding from the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for Specialty Court Programs, Mental Health Court. Funding agreement is for $257,801. Funding through State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No county general funds are involved. Number 4, approval to accept funding from the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for Specialty Court Program, DUII Court. Funding agreement is for $71,186. Funding through State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No county general funds are involved. Number 5, approval to accept funding from the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for Specialty Court Program, Adult Drug Court. Funding agreement is for $204,257. Funding through State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No county general funds are involved. Number 6, approval to accept funding from North Clackamas School District to defray startup costs at two new student-based health centers. Funding agreement is for $105,000. No county general funds are involved. Under C, Disaster Management, 1, approval of facility use agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Sandy, Sandy Community Services for emergency and/or disaster-related use of the Sandy Community/Seniors Center. This agreement has no monetary value. Any expenses incurred related to returning facilities to pre-use conditions will be paid with federal grants that provide funds for that purpose. No county general funds are involved. D, Transportation and Development, under 1, approval of amendment number 1 of a supplemental project agreement, number 32607, with Oregon Department of Transportation for the South End Ramp at mile post 3.8, project amendment number 1. Updates the overall project cost estimate. Overall project cost estimate is $4,588,463, funded by federal emergency relief program and county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Under D 2, approval of a contract with Harper-Hauf-Peterson Regalis, Inc. for $362,000. Under D 2, approval of a contract with Harper-Hauf-Petersen Regalis, Inc. for 362nd Avenue Pave Shoulders and Safety Improvements Project. Contract total is $247,232.50, funded by community road fund and system development charges. No county general funds are involved. E, under Public and Government Affairs. Number 1, approval of a contract with Journal Graphics for printing and mailing of Clackamas County Magazine. Maximum contract value is $639,056 over three years. Funding from franchise revenue, department reimbursements, and county general funds. And that is the end of the list, Chair.
Thank you. Mary, appreciate that. Does any commissioner wish to remove any item off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Martha Schrader has moved approval of the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion? Mary, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Short meeting today, folks. Up next is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading these into the record due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. As always, we take in-person people first. I have one blue card filled out. Les Poole, please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have five minutes.
Did you hear that, folks? I have five minutes.
Three minutes. That was...
I couldn't help it. Just letting you know I'm listening.
You know what? You're the only person here today. If you want five minutes, then take five minutes.
I always try to be done in four. All kidding aside, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, as always, and have a couple of things I want to share today. One of them is that I've been involved in policy and been an activist and certainly been deeply and passionately promoting public involvement, public voting on debt, and have been coming to the meetings and speaking for 10 years now. And that started 10 years ago when I told our new commissioner at the time, Commissioner Savis and some others, that I was going to do everything I could to show up for the next two years and see what came of it. And what came of it ultimately was some change here. And the change was really about spending and some of the priorities we have. And we're seeing that again. We're seeing a tremendous amount of borrowing and spending by the state. Metro is completely a runaway train. We could spend five minutes on Metro and barely touch Metro's failings. And unfortunately for us, Metro has a tremendous amount of authority in land use and transportation. And that leads me, of course, to HB 2017. That was a measure, a huge transportation measure that was passed by the legislature. And in that $5.5 billion is about $350 million that ODOT would have received from sources in its budget. But the bill not only is an approval of ODOT's budget, but of a large number of projects. So we're seeing a variety of projects. But unfortunately, I-205 was cut out. Widening and addressing I-205 was eliminated before the bill was passed. And what we had at the time was a vague promise that tolling might be a way to pay to increase the capacity there, pay for some new lanes, pay for some bridge expansion. And that's a legitimate legal use for tolling. But hidden in that bill was congestion pricing, and it gets a variety of names. But in essence, what's ultimately come from this is that we're now subject to a specious plan by ODOT to charge us to use existing lanes and put the money into what we like to call a slush fund or a vague pit. They're looking to do a two-year test on it because it's not legitimate or it's not an approved use at this time. And unfortunately, the public is now finding out what happened. How did we get here? And why are we still backed up in traffic, hearing that we all need to get on light rail and it's going to fix it for us? I'm not anti-transit. I'm not anti-light rail. What I'm opposed to is the misguided spending and the attempts to change people's behavior through punitive punishing methods. And we absolutely need to have the public vote on the state's plan to toll us. Absolutely. And of course, that was never discussed in Salem because we know that while the public is willing to approve spending for something that's going to actually get built, there no one, no one has any interest. And I can't find anyone that can justify or explain what's going on, even though the primary focus, and please hear this and hear it clearly, the primary focus is changing behavior and somehow taking a punitive, ill-advised scheme and making it equitable. So their primary goal is equity in an unequivocal, unequitable scheme. There is no fairness in this at all. And it's very troubling to hear a big variety of claims about how much traffic will be diverted off the freeways by this. And I'll just conclude, and I do appreciate a little extra time. As someone who's got a lot of transportation and land use experience, I am just beside myself about what they're doing. And so please go to the Vehicle Transportation Alliance Facebook page. That's not just about tolling. It's a page that is about transportation and about making some changes here. How are we ever going to get the sunset or sunrise, I should say, corridor complete? How are we going to take care of the traffic choke point in West Lynn and in Clackamas County?
Thank you, Les.
That question remains vague, but this is not the answer. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Les, for bringing those points forward. That is all the in-person testimony I have here today. Mary, how many do we have on Zoom?
Chair, I have a list of three, and I will call on them in the order that they were received.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Okay, the first we have is Angela Nyland. Angela, can you hear us? Yes, Angela, we can hear you. Could you please state your name and area of residence, please, and then begin?
Angela Nyland, Boering, Oregon. Just a heads up, there probably were people who couldn't get registered because the link was broken for the Zoom call on part of the page. I'm hoping it's fixed, but that whole process changed. So just a heads up that, you know, it just got fixed yesterday. So anyway, what I was going to say is, first greetings, commissioners. First, I want to read the Clackamas County diversity statement that we all need to live by, correct? Clackamas County is a place where all people thrive, have a sense of safety, connecting, belonging, so that each person is honored and celebrated for the diversity they bring. The bolded... So, you know, I am hoping that, you know, everyone on the board will honor each other after listening to the policy meeting and honor and celebrate all the people who call in because we all need to thrive. I do have one request. I've been attending meetings for a long time, you know, even prior to this year. And I have, my request is, is it possible for the board to refrain from cellphone and computer use during public testimony unless you're taking notes or, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's emergencies? But I've been watching for a long time, and we try and stay respectful on the phone, you know, on the phone in our comments. It would show us respect and let us know you're really listening if people were not doing other things during public comments. Lastly, constituents continue to come to you every week about the resolution. Governor Brown, in the tri-county chair meeting, I'm not sure what that group is called, brought up that she could reduce the business requirements from 100 employees to 50 employees. That is very concerning because we are still under an emergency order. My understanding is that one of the three who voted to table the resolution would have to be the one to bring it back. Where is this in the board rules? Has all, you know, does, that a resolution has to be unanimous? I mean, there's so many people are impacted by this. And I have to say, I'm speaking for others, I guess, from my prior life, professional life. They figured I spoke before there, and so I'm speaking for many people here. It's kind of overwhelming to some to come and even over the phone. But where is it that it has to be unanimous to pass? And have we never had a resolution that didn't have 100% backing? I thought that's why we have five people on the board.
Thank you, Angela, very much for calling in. Please stay online. I'm going to attempt to address some of the issues that you brought up. And while you were testifying, I was using my cellphone to ask a question about a topic that you brought up so I could get your answer immediately. So if you see any commissioner doing that, including me, I try to get the answers to our people right away and not delay. And yes, I was on my cellphone, but I also have two ears that I'm able to hear while I'm texting. And the answer to what may have been a broken link on our Zoom people this morning is the web link was wrong and not identified until this morning, but it was fixed this morning. And I also understand from our administrator that you can register a week in advance for the business meeting, which I didn't even know that. And so sometimes I will look up something. If I hear anybody, or if our commissioners hear anybody who comes and testifies to us with a fact that may be totally incorrect, or they misperceive something, or they misunderstand something, I will make attempt, and any of my commissioners will, to correct that. Oftentimes, I call on our county attorney or I call on our county administrator. I will text them ahead of time to be prepared to address that particular issue. So as chair of running these meetings, it may not look, it may not look like I'm not attentive, but I can assure you, I'm very attentive. And sharing these meetings is not as easy as it appears. Regarding the resolution, does not have to be unanimous. No vote on this board of county commissioners must be unanimous. Thank you, Angela, for calling in. Mary, who's next?
Yes, we have Bill Weir. Going to get Bill here. Bill, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right. Please state your name and your area of residence, please.
Then you have three minutes.
Yes.
This is Bill Weir, Damascus. First of all, I'd like to confirm a few of the things that Ms. Nyland had mentioned. I think it is...
Bill, would you, Bill, hang on a minute, please. We're trying to turn up the volume in the hearing room. And we're going to start you over. The clock has not started. Okay, are we ready, Mary?
Yes. Bill, could you speak, please, so we could hear you?
Yes. This is Bill Weir, Damascus. And I just wanted to comment on a few things that Ms. Nyland had commented on.
Bill, hang on a minute, please. I'm so sorry. We can barely hear...
I'm sorry. I need staff to come and help Mary, please, with the keypad here. I'm not sure myself what the button is to increase the volume.
Yeah, staff is coming in. Bill, I'm just going to have you just wait a second because we really can't hear you unless you want to talk, and we don't hear you.
No, it's not him. It's here in the room, so...
Yeah, I know. It's our technology issue here today. Thank you. We'll just wait.
Gary, do you want... Do I need to go get Christine?
No.
He's coming. Bill, could you say a few, a word or two, please?
Yeah, this is coming in from Damascus.
Okay.
Keep talking, Bill. Just say a few words so we can just...
I can't believe you'd want me to keep talking. Okay.
Well, don't start your testimony yet, please.
Are we there yet?
All right. Actually, it appears it is on your end, Bill. We have our speakers up to as high as they will go in the room, so...
Well, let me see. Chat.
What device are you on, Bill?
Huh?
What device are you using?
Huh?
Are you using a cellphone or an iPad or a computer?
I'm using a laptop. Can you hear me now?
Check the volume on your device that you're using.
I just turned it up. Can you hear me?
You know what? We're going to proceed as it is. Thank you very much. Go ahead and start your testimony.
Okay. I hope you can hear me, but I just wanted to second what Ms. Nyland had mentioned about using cellphones and iPads on committee. I agree with the chair that she uses that to move things along, and that's fine. But you have at least two commissioners that continually use their cellphones to text or they give the appearance of not paying attention. And I think that's really what we're driving at. It's really the optics of it. And this thing with the 100%, that was self-imposed by Commissioner Savis that didn't allow that particular resolution to at least get a vote. There should have been the courtesy to the chair of at least having a vote on that. Now, in Tuesday's meeting, you were talking about trying to have better relations among yourselves as a commission. And I think the obvious unsaid issue to come to agreement for good relationships is to rescind the resolution against Commissioner Scholl from last January. A new common agreement would be that they all acknowledge that he's fully functioning and a valued member of your commission. You really have only yourselves to blame for starting the new term under such a negative message. The atmosphere was poisoned from the start. And Commissioner Schrader was saying she just wants everybody to get along together, and yet she today would want Commissioner Scholl to exit the commission. Her name is on a document that says that. So I think that's the first thing you really need to clear up so that you all, all of you, can work together. Thank you.
Chair, can I respond? Because I...
Stop. Commissioner, when the speaker has finished his three minutes, that's how we do that here.
All right. I'll put my line on.
Bill, go ahead.
Bill? Bill, could you say something, please?
It's like he's muted.
Yeah. Bill? It says, "Ask to unmute." Bill, can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just so commissioners, you know, we can always respond, but we let them finish the three minutes. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, Bill, could you tell me what document you're talking about?
Okay.
Because I've been nothing but courteous with Commissioner Scholl.
Yeah, what I'm talking about is the original document, the resolution that you had, I believe it was January 14th.
Right.
Where you were demanding that, or however you want to put it, that Mr. Scholl resign and that you were agreeing with the basis of it. Now, what you and some other commissioners projected on a number of us, that that was a political coup. And then in June, when the chair had brought up the resolution submitted by Mr. Scholl, all of you jumped on Mr. Scholl to... all of you jumped on Mr. Scholl to not put that resolution in. I mean, you can't, you can't say that you're all for agreement and working together when you've basically smeared one of the commissioners that still stands today. That document has not been rescinded. That is your position, Commissioner Schrader.
Okay. Well, that clar--
Thank you for clarification. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, that just clarifies where that's coming from. But I will just say that, I've said this before, that my job is to work whoever is duly elected as a commissioner. And that's kind of my stance. And Bill, I'm sorry you see it that way, but, and that's okay. I don't see it that way. And my job is to be respectful to Commissioner Scholl, Chair Smith, Commissioner Savis, and Commissioner Fisher. And also to be courteous and as kind as I can be to our staff and other people that work here for us on the commission. But, but, your point is well taken, and thank you for bringing it up. I appreciate it.
I think Bill Weir raises an interesting point. He made the statement, I hope I wrote it down right. We can't say we're all in agreement and going to move forward on relationships when one of our members still needs his liaison duties. And I've been working behind the scenes to restore those. We had an email from Angela Nyland that came in this week and said that we need a board rule for restoring those. Well, we don't. How we removed those liaison duties was through a motion that was voted on. And I suggest this board revisit that with a motion in the business meeting to restore those. Now, we, this board, is going to meet in a little team-building exercise for an hour, and I assume that this topic will be brought up then. But until then, it's, this is an opportunity for our board to work on issues and move forward. This board has, for instance, let's take a look at our juvenile department for a minute over there. Youth who get in trouble, and I'm not relating this to any of our commissioners. We put them in a program because we give them a second opportunity. We give people a second opportunity for forgiveness because we want to move forward in life and help people out. So I suggest this board look deep into your heart to revisit that issue, and at a time to be announced, we will consider this. Thank you. Mary, who's up next?
Chair, are you ready? We have Christine Kennedy. Let me get her here. Christine, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Christine, if you could please state your name and area of residence? And you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Christine Kennedy. I live in Lake Oswego, and I've lived in Clackamas County for seven years. Chair Smith and commissioners, I'm calling today to speak about leadership during this difficult time. We're still in the midst of the COVID epidemic. I noticed that we did not have a COVID update this week, and I would like to request that we continue to have COVID updates. I think that in looking at the overall statistics, it appears that we're slowly, slowly, slowly making some improvements, but we still have a significant number of unvaccinated people, and I'm very concerned about what's going to happen this winter. I just don't want us to miss the ball or be inattentive to some of the issues that we need to make decisions about as a county. I would like to just, again, give kudos to the Public Health Department and the information that's posted on the website, encourage people to look at that. I do just want to make the suggestion that oftentimes, a specific strategy to address health issues is to identify areas that have particularly low vaccination rates and develop some specific strategies. That might be something to try. Personally, I'm very excited to see vaccinations becoming available for the five to 11-year-olds. Lots of lots of complexities with all the school issues. So I just, again, want to encourage everybody to keep focus on the way out of the pandemic as the vaccination. We're continuing to learn as time goes by, and we really, it's very important that we integrate data and factual learnings into our leadership styles and our strategies. Chair Smith, I know one of the things that's particularly difficult for you are surprises, but that is just the nature of leadership. So I would continue all to work during this difficult time to find common ground, common values, very important. The significance of this time for you all as leaders just cannot be underestimated. And good luck, continue your hard work. Thank you.
Gary, would you make a comment, please?
Yes, I apologize, commissioners. I meant to announce there is no COVID update this week because Philip Mason-Joyner, our Public Health Director, is not available today. So we're just skipping it for this week. It will be back next week. And we do have the website updated with his weekly report.
Yeah, anybody can get, you know, updated information by going to our website, and I would submit that's a better place to get it because there's a lot of information, a lot of information. If you don't have enough information on that, you can go to Oregon Health Authority, OHA.gov website, and really drill down for the details or metrics, data, whatever you need. Thank you.
And that was the end of the list, Chair.
Oh, that's the end of the list. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Now we move on to commissioner communication. No, we don't. Gary, we have you up.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, next is County Administrator Update. I always like to share good news happening here at Clackamas County. A nonprofit group, Seres Policy Research, has received a $50,000 grant from the Annie E. Casey Foundation to support our Clackamas County Juvenile Department's participation in the Whole Youth Initiative Project. The Whole Youth Initiative Project is designed to help agencies collect data on every young person's sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression, while also ensuring that racial identities are more fully captured. Most juvenile justice systems do not ask youths about these aspects and fail to either develop authentic relationships or fail to refer these youth to the best available services. This grant and our partnership will provide resources and training to county staff, which will include reviewing existing anti-discrimination policies to ensure LGBTQ youth are treated fairly, providing peer-to-peer learning network, and collecting key data and producing annual reports. Thank you to our juvenile director, Christina McMahon, and juvenile staff who were involved in this effort, and to our District Attorney, John Wetworth, who supported a, provided a grant support letter, which we were told helped seal the deal for us to receive this award. So that is my update for today. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much. Now, we will go on to commissioner communication. And who is up first? Martha Schrader.
Oh, gosh. Well, if I get too long-winded, stop me, Chair.
Well, no. We just run a time limit. If you want to talk about the stuff you were doing and give an update, I'd really appreciate that.
Yeah, but I don't want to waste your time either.
No, this is not a waste of time. It's only 11 o'clock.
Oh, yay. Well, yeah, I've been pretty busy out there in the world at this point. Been working on early childhood issues with the National Association of Counties, and we're looking at what our role is in childcare as an economic driver. So I was at a webinar this past week with the National Association of Counties dealing with that issue. One of the things they're finding that if parents have difficulty getting adequate, affordable childcare, that is a barrier to them having a job, having a prosperous life, moving up the economic ladder. And so we've been kind of looking at that issue from that framework. I also am a member now of the Economic Mobility Leadership Network, and that's a cohort of commissioners, again, at the national level. And basically, what we are doing there is looking at economic mobility. How do people move out of poverty? Why do they have limited economic opportunity? And what is the future of work in all of this? So it's kind of that nexus between the hand up so people can really start to be productive and prosper and, you know, really kind of maybe get back to the American dream in this, in this country of having a house, having children, having stability, having food, you know, again, particularly the housing crisis we're dealing with. So I thought that those two issues were pretty fruitful. I learned about it at, in San Diego when I was invited to be part of the Executive Leadership Team Initiative, and that is a leadership program founded by Colin Powell. Then he has integrated that with counties because he believed that counties were essential to good governance. They invited me to be part of that process. The only, only thing that I'm sad about is that he actively actually taught in that program. So we just want to remember him, as he passed away, that I'm very privileged that I had colleagues out there who would think I was good enough, or smart enough, or whatever enough, in order to be able to do some more of that executive leadership search. So I'm pretty honored, honored by that. And finally, I did want to say something about Lake Oswego because I was walking my two puppies the other day, Ginger Rose and Little Dog. Ginger's a little labradoodle, and Little Dog is a crazy Pomeranian. But I was walking around Lake Oswego, and we had a county table set up with the Oregon Chinese Friendship Council, and they were handing out information from the Oregon Health Authority about, you know, vaccines and vaccine side effects, how to quarantine, Johnson and Johnson, benefits of getting vaccinated. And I'm not saying this to bring up anything that's going to make people uncomfortable, but I just want to make the point that it was nice to kind of walk my town, and there was information out there available should people want to read it. So I would just want to thank our staff for being part of that. They were giving out sanitary gel, they were giving out Band-Aids, and the theme was vaccines save lives. Again, this is not to be controversial, and that's not where I'm going. I just want to remind people that, just take a look, take a look at all the information at your disposal, okay? And take a look at, you know, public health issues, and then make your decision, one way or the other, about whether or not you're going to do things. Personally, I just got my flu shot yesterday, and I got a whooping cough shot because I have to go see my kids over Christmas. My daughter's having a new baby. And in about a week or so, I guess they've okayed Moderna for a booster, so I'm going to get a booster, too. Now, that's my personal choice, okay? And I'm, I'm not, so I'm not judging, but there is good information out there, and I want to thank our public health folks for getting it out there and coming to Lake Oswego where I could, I could really have a nice chat with people. So thank you, Chair. You've been very patient with me. I appreciate it.
Oh, no, no problem. This is a good time to let the folks know what we're doing aside from our regular meetings.
It's about access, too. It's just a comment about access, nothing, no judgments, okay? That's how I feel about this.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis, you're up next.
Sure. I guess I do want to kind of address, this is not what I wanted to speak about today on transportation, but I will get there. But I did want to speak a little bit to some of the points that were raised today by some of the callers, and actually, some of the points were raised by some of the callers during this entire year on some of the topics that were discussed today. And I believe possibly it was Mr. Weir, to, honestly, to his credit, not being critical here at all, but to his credit, that he, I think he asked a question at one point in time about what basis or what rules, basically, essentially, I'm paraphrasing, did we censor Commissioner Scholl and so forth? And I haven't forgotten that, and which really triggered my desire to pursue the board rules. And following that, I believe, just from memory, when Commissioner Smith had raised, you know, the thought that asking Commissioner Scholl to apologize to us as a means of getting his liaison assignments, I again raised the, again, raised the prospect of working on some board rules for us to adopt in the county code. We hold our employees responsible. We hold people responsible to follow the guidelines, our speakers, we hold them to some guidelines and rules, and, you know, we ought to be holding ourselves to those. And I commonly put, I commonly refer to this, referred to on Tuesday, referred to today. It'd be great, maybe, if it was on the website under Board of County Commissioners, that these are the rules we abide by. So when I hold this up, I'd sure like to people see everything that's on here, not just one thing, but everything that's on here. And I can cite some things, I think, where maybe we went astray, even on, even on Tuesday from this. And there's a couple categories. One is, it says under spirit. Spirit is an acronym for service, professionalism, integrity, respect, individual accountability, and trust. And on this particular laminated piece here, it's under, the next heading is actions we will take to ensure the cohesiveness, the productivity, and the efficiency of the board. And there's 14 different numbered, and some alphabetically, things that we will, you know, we will take to ensure cohesiveness. And then below that, it's a short, little bulleted item for ground rules for meeting conduct. And I'm just going to read those. Listen, to hear, and understand. Stay curious and open to others' perspectives. Allow all to share their perspectives. Share reasons behind questions and statements. Ask clarifying questions. Recognize that we all have great compassion for our role and the county value, one another's communications, and DISC Styles. That's an acronym for personality assessment. And assume positive intent, and then correct misinformation. You know, those are just a few. But the rules I'm talking about, that I'm seeking, and I know that I submitted some ideas for that, and Chair Smith recently has as well, and I really like, again, to move that, move those forward and get those codified into code. The same, again, county code, we hold each other responsible, we hold our staff responsible for certain actions, our citizens. We have rules and laws in this state, and I really think that to sit and change, perhaps, or to do something, I will, you know, no disrespect intended when I say this, but, you know, just whatever fits the, you know, the hour or the moment of time, or willy-nilly this, we're just going to, these are the rules today, we're going to make up our own when it comes to rescinding or anything else. And I just want to just say that there's not a rule, never referred that there is a rule, that anything, any vote, or any action or resolution be unanimous. For example, it's not a rule, it's not written. It is, and for the most part, every, I can't think of a resolution we passed where we haven't been unanimous. And that's a message about the board's position. And the board is made up of five commissioners elected by the citizens. So when you have a board resolution, it's not a law, it's a resolution. And it speaks, again, to what the board speaks to its citizens that elected them. And I think that's presumed that it's five people. And so it's a principle, more than anything else. So when the board's divided, you know, it's five people, all elected bodies are odd numbers. If the board's divided, you're not sending a real message, and you're ineffective, and you're sending a wrong message because the people that are representative, if two of the people say no, and they're reflecting a certain makeup of the county, and then three people say yes, and they're representing a certain makeup of the county, it sends a mixed message, and the resolution becomes worthless in the sense that, in the sense that it's not a reflection of the board, it's a reflection of the division of the board. And that's really a fundamental poor message for a body to do, to its citizens. Our citizens deserve better. But that's not what I want to talk about. I do hope that we can actually move forward with the board rules and codify those, and I will put that on my issues list for Tuesday. What I did want to talk about today was transportation. This is the day, the morning, Thursday morning, in which J-PAC meets, and we had another good conversation this morning, and I will say that perhaps there ought to be rules there as well. You know, we have principles, we have guiding principles. There's a lot of things we do based on, based on our philosophies and our guidance. And so recently, as we're moving forward to the new regional transportation plan process, there's these, basically, four pillars of things that are before us that we're trying to solve in transportation. Equity, congestion-- congestion, safety, and I'm, I'm missing the fourth one. But the point is that we shouldn't be cherry picking those, for example. You shouldn't say that today, here's our, here's what our goals are, we're going to cherry pick one or two guiding principles, ignore the rest, even though they might be in conflict, even though they might be compromised, even though they're in contradiction, we should ignore those and focus on the ones that we like or that a few of us like. And guiding principles are supposed to be looked at in context, just like pretext or, or precepts, just like understandings and rules. We don't pick what part of the law we're going to obey and disobey the remainder. So tolling, I made a pretty strong statement this morning that, that when it comes to congestion pricing and all the things that were talked about with, with behavior change for congestion pricing, how effective it is, and this is, you know, ODOT saying and Metro saying, we're going to use congestion prices as a means to change behavior because we want people to take other modes of transportation. And yet, on 205, not provide any of those and still move forward with no commitment. And I, I made a couple of statements this morning about that. It's unfair to move forward and not provide any of those alternatives. And we're not, we're not going to accomplish it. And, and it's just, it's just grossly unfair to be forging ahead and not having a solution in mind, not having, you know, those alternatives and a resolution on that, and to just be plowing forward. So we'll have a, we're going to have a town hall on, on December 1st or 2nd, 1st is it? I think it's December 1st, we're having our town hall on, on the tolling congestion pricing in this region. And, you know, people made their arguments this morning that favored their particular mode of transportation. People made arguments in, in effort to promote their particular part of the region. And we have an unbalanced transportation system. We have a lot of inequities in this, in this region, and we don't have the alternatives and the investments in Clackamas County. And while others that are more powerful, politically powerful and larger and larger populations seem to continue to prevail in winning a lot of the resources and activities and investments in this region and leaving us kind of astray. So I continue to fight on behalf of the citizens of this county at those tables. It's not easy. We're outnumbered. I'm doing the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Fisher has arrived for our meeting.
Yeah, Commissioner Smith.
How do you do? You didn't, you weren't able to participate. Would you like to finish up with your commissioner communication?
Sure. I was actually able to listen to a great part of the public comment as I was driving back from our mental health walk-in clinic. So I really appreciate that we can do that, you know, chime in. And I don't think though that Mary knew that I was there because for some reason the link didn't put my name up on the, on the issue. But I was present and listening.
Yeah, I'm going to, you can talk, obviously, whatever you want, but I think from here on out, I think our commissioners need to be present for the meeting. And having a last minute video or, or whatever it's called, Zoom come in is really kind of problematic. But I appreciate that you're here in person. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm not quite sure what that was about, but maybe we will discuss that on Tuesday morning. I had the wonderful opportunity of welcoming Representative Noz, who is the co-chair of the Human Services Ways and Means Committee. He is doing a deep dive into, across the state, for the community mental health system to really understand what, how services are delivered. As you say, you see one county, you see one county. In community mental health, you see one community mental health program, you see one community mental health program. So in Clackamas County, we have an array of safety net services. We have the crisis and support line. We have our walk-in center, the Clackamas Mental Health Center. And it's not just a walk-in center, but it is also a telehealth center in the sense that you don't have to physically go to get services. You can access services through other means. We also have peer support services, which I learned today as we went through all of the programs for Representative Noz. In 2019, 6,000 individuals were impacted by peer support services. It is incredible, the amount of support we're able to give to members of our community. And Clackamas County is unique in the level of investment that we, not necessarily financial investment, but investment in this type of service because it really works in providing the support that people need to feel like they're part of their communities. We also talked about the Mobile Crisis Response Team, an incredibly important service. And in this last legislature, there was a significant level of investment that will be brought to bear that Representative Noz was very involved in. Also, along with the Mobile Crisis Response Team is our Behavioral Health Unit, and those are behavioral health specialists housed in the sheriff's office, where they go out with our deputies on certain types of calls. And then, of course, you've all heard me talk about Clackamas Safe and Strong started off as the go teams at the beginning of the pandemic and is now evolving into really looking at providing support to whoever needs it, especially targeted to disasters. So this was a, this morning was a very important meeting. There are, the legislature's taking a much greater approach on behavioral health. There is, for the first time in the last year, the first subcommittee on behavioral health at the legislature, a direct focus. There is a lot going on. And we are posed to really look at systems improvements. So one piece, and as I, and I want to just put a little aside here, I take notes on my iPad as I go. I know people think I'm doing other stuff and that's been a concern. I had a talk with Angela Nylund last night and said, no, I'm taking notes. I'm listening. I'm taking those notes. I actually text less the notes that I took during his commissioner communications. I know less, just so you know. I want you to know, I'm listening here. But during our meeting with Representative Noz, I, because we went over in depth, each of our program managers went over each of these elements for his education. And quite frankly, I did not interject my questions at that time. That was his time to learn. But I have many questions that I'm going to pass along because what I'm seeing is this tremendous opportunity, and I'm really pretty excited about it, the tremendous opportunity to integrate the different parts of what Clackamas County does to provide our safety net. So while we have our walk-in center that provides mental health services, we have our mobile crisis team, and so much of what they do, and they go out to deal with people that are having behavioral health crises and issues is provide, and I didn't realize it was this in-depth until today, but a pretty significant navigation and follow-through with those individuals to make sure that it's not just a one-time-only intervention, but that that person is followed through and supported. And all of that type of intervention really helps us prevent crises later and prevent that person getting involved with the justice system and with our jail system or with our hospital system. So there's some pretty incredible work to be done. We are absolutely under-resourced to meet the need and the demand that is needed in our county, which is huge. I know you are all aware. So I was honored and privileged to be asked to be part of our team to host. And this was an important meeting for me to be at this morning. And I will definitely listen to the presentations and some of the constituent communication that I missed. But it's really, really important. Commissioner Savas, I really appreciate what you are talking about, about looking at our board rules. And I know that we had those emailed to us. I just want to put out a request because I don't know how to find those at my fingertips. And if somebody could re-forward those to all of the commissions so that we could, could look at what we had talked about a few months ago, that would be really, really great. And I appreciate you bringing these up, our ground rules for meeting conduct. I think that's really important. I would love it if we have had the benefit, the three of us, of going through the DISC analysis, which is leadership styles and how do we work with different leadership styles? It's a pretty simple process to go through. I would love it if our other two commissioners could do that and we could join in on, on deeper understanding of, of how we all work most effectively. I think that would be a good exercise for us as a board, like it was during the previous board. But that's up to this group to decide. Looking forward to Tuesday, I will, before Tuesday, get a, put a list of things that I would like us to address, get that to Chair Smith so that she's got it, and to Gary, and I don't know if Nancy's helping to coordinate or think about this, to Gary and Chair Smith. And we will, I'm looking forward to us working better together. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Scholl, you're up next.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. And thank you to the speakers and callers for your time and effort this morning. On transportation, like Commissioner Savas has said, he's our liaison to the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation. Couple comments. The I-5 Interstate Bridge Replacement Project is now in the preliminary engineering phase. Check it out, please, on the ODOT webpage to learn more. On tolling and congestion pricing, public comments can be made now through 15 November on an amendment to the 2018 Regional Transportation Plan. You need to know that ODOT is committed to tolling and congestion pricing to generate revenue and to manage demand on I-205 and I-5. See www.organtolling.org and make your opinion known. If you live on a major east-west road, either north or south of I-205, what is congestion pricing going to do to your neighborhood? The Director of the Urban Mobility Office at ODOT said this morning, on a meeting that Commissioner Savas and I were on, quote, "No other city in the nation or any other country has planned to toll all lanes of a highway system," unquote. Well, maybe there's a reason for that. Get involved, see the website. Also, work is beginning on the 2023 Regional Transportation Plan. It will set the stage for travel options in the future. See organmetro.gov for more information on that. They're taking information, they got a scoping phase going on until March 2022. See the website, make your voice heard. Also, Commissioner Savas, that fourth pillar was the climate pillar. Yeah. Commissioner Savas is your liaison to the J-PAC. And this morning, he was speaking out for the interests of Clackamas County. He's doing a great job. And thank you, Paul, for that. I appreciate it. Look for a movement to call for a public vote on tolling. Keep your eyes open for that. And also, Mr. Poole, thanks for your, your comments this morning. And folks need to look at the Vehicle Transportation Alliance for more information on tolling. And please join us on one December for the Town Hall on tolling. On property taxes, this year's total is 998,663,440, an increase of 3.79% over last year. Please see the Assessor's press release dated 20 October for more details on how these taxes are being used to support the needs of Clackamas County residents. On homelessness, House Bill 2006 provides opportunities for creating cluster communities, shelters, transition housing to enable moving homeless people into more acceptable and controlled environments where important and critical outreach can happen. Okay? This also will enable us to shortcut some of the state land use laws. There's a huge amount of expertise in Clackamas County. Our nonprofits are working to support those who are homeless. Our county staff is doing the same. I would like, in the next two months, for nonprofits or residents of this county who have ideas on a project to help alleviate homelessness in Clackamas County, to send me an email at mshawl@clackamas.us. I want to hear what your ideas are because it's my intent in January of 2022 to make a concept presentation to the board on a effort to build these, these very necessary housing for homeless. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. This week's been a busy week as all. Our morning, our Tuesday morning sessions were canceled because the board, I think all board members attended the Northwest Public Employee Diversity Conference, is that right? And it was through webinar. The reason why I say that, because the webinar format, I'm not, I couldn't see who the attendees were necessarily. So that was some good education, I think, that we received. This week, Commissioner Schrader and I attended a meet and greet for the Oregon State University Extension Service New Director, Dr. Lyles. He's a new state director. And it's his goal within the first 90 days to visit every single county in Oregon. We really appreciated him coming. He is quite well-regarded and has a lot of credibility in the area of agriculture. He comes from Mississippi, grew up on a family farm in Mississippi, shared his personal experiences with that. And now his family acquired a farm in the early 1900s of really poor land and then turned it into productive land over time. Also in attendance at that meeting was Representative Christine Drazen, Representative Mark Meek, and Senator Bill Kennermer. We discussed the, moving forward on the new extension building that wants to be built. There is currently a 50% equity in that building through cash and land. We discussed ideas, how to move forward and what possibilities were available. And we really got Dr. Lyles' attention on that. We also discussed the farming initiative that this board passed on our strategic goals. We were able to retire one goal and able to put in the farming issue up front. And we, and I talked to him about that. And he will be visiting me on, in January on those topics, which I'm, can't wait to because it's farming. It's really nice. Yesterday afternoon, we had a joint board meeting with the Clackamas County Fair Board. And it was really, really wonderful. We went over to their house, so to speak, and, and the fair board members were there. And most of our board members were there. And we discussed moving forward. You folks may have known the legislature, Christine Drazen and Senator Kennermer allocated about $4 million for the construction of a new livestock barn, and then another million dollars for the construction of an RV park. We talked about how to proceed with that. And they're quite amenable to receiving the county's assistance from our facilities folks for a project manager to help control costs and get, sharpen the pencils, get some bid prices. And frankly, the cost of that building has really escalated even since the spring, when the allocations were made. So they are very committed to fundraising on their own, hiring really a professional fundraiser to start knocking on the doors. I think that they're going to be successful on some fundraising because of what I've seen in fundraisers that I have attended in the last couple of months, the amount of money. For instance, the Junior Livestock Auction that they have every year at the Clackamas County Fair, where the participants in 4H, they bring their animals to show, and then they're able to sell them to, the public comes in and buys them. $500,000 was made in the Junior Livestock Auction. And that is probably, you know, one of the highest in the state from, I've been kind of keeping track. But there's a very generous public out there who I think want to see a new livestock barn that we, that will be a multi-use center. And we're trying to, you know, move forward on that in the design, build, construction, and the cost on that. Our county fair board is doing some really fun things. For instance, coming up is Scare Fair, a Halloween event. Last year, they had a drive-through from COVID. This year, they're going to have a walk-through. I suggest you go to the fair board website and see, and you can take your kids out for that. that. Martha, or was that the one they were offering kids 10 and under free? Was that right?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, kids 10 and under free, but the parents have to pay. And so, I think that might become a fun thing to do. Also, they're having a, a Winter Christmas Fest, and I may not have the name of that right, but last year, if you remember, they purchased a lot of Christmas lights and had a drive-through Christmas celebration-type event. This year, they're redoing it, and it's going to be a walk-through, and they've actually had a local designer from Clackamas County to help them set up certain exhibits that will, I think, designed to wow you. And so, that's another event that they're having out in Clackamas County Fair. And I'm really excited about working with our fair board. They seem to be energized with the new influx of money because, quite frankly, the cost of erecting a multipurpose barn that's about 39,000 square feet is daunting. And so, any areas that we can help with that, they're very appreciative of that, and we're working together. Later today, I will host a mayor and chairs event where I invite all mayors from Clackamas County cities to a Zoom event. And frankly, Zoom works really well on that because nobody has to get in their cars and drive-through traffic to attend something. And we talk about the issues we have in common, we talk about what Clackamas County is doing to move forward. I listen to them, and it's a very good exchange of ideas, and I like to keep those areas of communication open. After that, there's a union president's meeting, which I attend, is it every month?
Yes.
Yes, every month with Gary Schmidt. And it's a good opportunity for me to listen to what our employees and the presidents of these, we have seven, I believe, labor unions at Clackamas County, what the temperature is, what they're thinking, what they're doing, what they want. We can't always accommodate them, but it's just really good for me to listen to that. I thoroughly enjoy them. Those people are just the salt-of-the-earth workers for our county, and I really value their opinions and the associations that I get to have with them once a month. That's all I have today. Commissioners, see no other business before this board. We are adjourned.